Good evening, everyone. Call in to order the Town of Hingham Board of Selectment meeting for Tuesday, March 26, 2019. Approve all the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 19, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment for items not on the agenda. I am looking up this week. I don't see anybody in the room. Unless you two guys wanted to say this.
I'll keep it by hand.
Okay. All right. Nobody's got their hand up. So, let's get right to it. Public hearing on the request of Comcast to install and maintain approximately 61 feet of two four-inch PVC conduits, including a three-by-three manhole at the intersection of Central Street and South Street. Who's here?
Good evening. Dave Flowell in Comcast. Oh, did you want him to?
You can sit at the table. Yeah, might be a little bit of a conversation. Would you introduce yourself, please, and tell the community what you're proposing to do and what that involves?
Yep. Dave Flowell in Comcast. So, Central Street, we have an existing conduit system there that we put in.
And who are you with Comcast?
Project Coordinator.
Okay. Are you going to be overseeing this, or are you just making the pitch for the company?
I will be overseeing it, but there will be other project coordinators that will be involved in the project.
Okay.
So, basically, Central Street, starting at the existing Comcast conduit in the intersection, placing a three-by-three manhole over the existing conduits, and then from the newly-placed manhole excavating to place two four-inch PVC conduits, 61 feet plus or minus to number seven, Central Street substantially, as shown on plan, filed with said petition.
That's it, huh?
Yes.
Are the green conduits, where do they, what's the rest of the lighting? Harry, you got the plan in front of you?
Yeah. We're looking at the green, it'd be sort of in drainage.
Okay. Is there a telephone here?
Um, yeah, I'm sure there is.
Yes. I mean, I seem to remember there was quite a problem on North Street.
This is all, it's all kind of intertwined here with, oh, telephone's right there.
Yeah.
VZ, says VZ on the manhole?
Verizon.
For Verizon.
Okay. Wow.
There's quite a few conduits in the ground for that.
And where are we in terms of the depth of your project in relation to the other utilities at a subsurface?
Well, we're showing it going over the existing conduit, and then we're going to try and work around the existing conduits that are there once the dig safe is called in.
There's a lot going on there, huh?
You're not kidding.
Wow.
Is the intersection?
Yeah, yeah.
I noticed you've got some phases on this project. What is that all about?
Was that the traffic plan that I submitted?
It appears to have the signs with the cones and the relative locations of...
Yeah, I figured I would submit a traffic plan because it's such a busy intersection, so at least it'd have something to, you know, to gauge, you know, how we're going to potentially propose to do the work and deal with traffic congestion in that area.
And what, is it just old? Is it, why do you need it?
This is a new installation to the bank at seven, at number seven.
I see, I see.
They've requested our service.
Okay.
And how long will this take to complete?
Um, I would say it's probably going to take four to five days, weather permitting.
How many detail offices do you anticipate?
Um, I don't know if we've figured that far into it. I don't know, I don't recall seeing on the plan if it called for details, but that's something we would work out when we apply for the street opening permit, and then we can deal with the police department and schedule details.
The project we had going on last year with Comcast, they had two details, and that was a little bit more, you know, a little bit broader project.
Well, you're going to have to close a part of Central Street down while you're doing this, right?
Well, we'll be able to maintain traffic and allow traffic to go around at all times. We're not going to be totally blocking off the road, so traffic will be able to be maintained with the construction signs and the assistance of the police department details.
And the work hours will be at 8:30 PM to 5:00 AM in the morning.
Oh.
Okay.
It's not going to be during the day.
So, I'm sorry, say that again. What time is it?
We'll take that place at night.
Eight-thirty?
Eight-thirty PM to 5:00 AM.
Okay. And are you envisioning two-way traffic with a, like, somebody stopping people, or are you envisioning one-way with a detour? Or you don't know that yet?
Well, it wouldn't be a flagman, because we're not allowed to use flagmen in Massachusetts, so it would be with a detour.
I think we have quite worked out the details on it.
Okay.
We've worked out, we're totally willing to give the branch in, so.
Okay.
It went very smoothly.
Okay.
Last year, when the project was similar, came out of Central Street down south to Main, and we detoured the traffic off Central Street, centered them down Elm Street to Main Street. So that eliminated one whole aspect of the travel going through that intersection. We could also do the same for Central Street at North Street and send them around that way, so we don't have to worry about the southbound, South Street traffic.
Okay.
And with this being new service, will any existing customers experience a service interruption while this work is taking place?
No. If, once they go to splice the cable in, that'll all be coordinated, and they shouldn't lose the service at all.
And given how, how much stuff is in that intersection with other utilities, how do, what steps are typically taken to make sure that in, you know, in the excavation that something else isn't disturbed?
So, when the contractor calls in the dig safe ticket, the dig safe call center reads back the utilities that are notified of having buried utilities in that intersection, and if the contractor notes that there's any utilities that are not read back to them when they call the ticket in, it's the contractor's responsibility to notify those different utilities that may not belong to dig safe. Typically, water or sewer doesn't belong, so they'd be responsible to contact them.
And how do you, just in terms of, at the site, knowing, knowing what's underground at this intersection, are there any additional steps that you can take once you are digging to just, you know, just so that nothing gets hit accidentally and damaged that would, you know, cause, cause a disruption to anybody?
Right. So, basically, the way that this plan was developed, the engineer requested utility plans from all the other utilities, and that's why we tried to place this, so it's going to be the least amount of excavation crossing over existing utilities. We're going to try and stay away from that, and then on top of calling in the dig safe, we should have it covered.
Okay. And why, why does the bank require this? Is it because of the, like, the degree of service you need at the bank? Like, I'm assuming that if there are other customers in this area that need Comcast service, you don't need a conduit? Like, why?
There's no service to that building currently, so we need to bring this conduit there.
At all. I see. Okay.
Harry, is this going to at all intrude upon the National Grid project?
No, shouldn't have any effect on whatsoever. This project, you know, I've had some brief discussions with the contractor that works for Comcast who is doing this job, and they're going to try to get in early April to get this project completed, and then we'll let it settle for, you know, eight to 10 weeks before they do the final patch, and hopefully that'll be done before the 4th, so that the square will be in good shape for the 4th of July.
Well, that's my question on the patch. Is it just going to be the patch in the area that's shown in the black dotted mark from plan?
Yeah, that's what it's...
Or is it going to be bigger than that?
No, we're expecting it to just be the path of the trench. The trenches will be feeling narrow.
Is this roadway subject to the moratorium?
No, it isn't.
Is this going to in any way impact or affect Town Brook?
No.
Are you going to be present?
The old Town Brook, who runs down South Streets, you know, the depth is, I don't know, it's about five feet below, probably their lowest excavation, and then the current Town Brook is north of their excavation.
Are you or someone from the DPW going to be present when this works?
I'll be present when the work is, you know, when they do their digging and the work's being taken place.
And the manhole cover is necessary because?
We need to intercept the existing conduits.
Okay. And does that interfere with the roadway, like, the repaving at all? Like, is that something we get concerned about, Harry, or no?
No, as long as it, well, we'll watch the compaction as you install it, and then as the compaction might, you know, we'll get 90% compaction in the best circumstances, but, you know, with traffic and weather hitting that trench for the next, you know, eight to 10 weeks, the compaction should be in good shape, so the compaction degrade the rest of the way, and it should be a fine patch.
Okay.
They passed the existing one in South Street that come out, you know, very well, so we expect the same performance.
Is there any other utility work that could be contemplated while this roadway's open?
I don't believe that, I haven't heard any of the utilities inquire about any work in that area. They generally, you know, notify us if they anticipate a street opening for any kind, and as of right now, there's been nothing.
Harry, when will the pre-construction meeting take place? If, I mean, it's, well, I think it's March 26 today, so you're looking to do this in early April, so does that mean the pre-construction meeting will happen pretty quickly?
We're talking probably April 8, and we'll be provided excavation, go over the whole site and the existing utilities. One thing you might want to be informed of, when you're digging within three feet of a dig safe marking, meaning three feet either side of, say, the watermark, you have to dig by hand until you locate that utility.
Okay.
You just can't, you just don't dig and hope you don't hit it.
Sure.
You have to dig by hand.
Thank you.
Within three feet of a marking.
And I'm sorry, is April 8 when, when the tentative plan is to start the work, or when the pre-construction meeting will take place?
Well, we were hoping that April 8 could be, would be a good time to start the work, so they get it in before Easter and a lot of, you know, activity in the square for services and school vacations, so we get there in prior to that.
Yeah. I hope I'm, I hope I'm not jinxing anything by, by mentioning weather, but I guess my only request in this would be that I think if there's snow on the ground, disrupting an intersection here would be really problematic, and, again, I hope I'm not jinxing anything, but I lived through the April Fool's Day storm right after I moved to the Boston area, so I, I'm fine with us proceeding with this plan, but I think we have to be aware that circumstances out of our control could, hopefully won't occur, but they could.
Yeah, we always keep an eye on the weather, and we always give three-day windows before we have any confirmation, so, yeah, that's always considered.
And does the bank pay for this? Does the bank pay for this project, or how does that get?
I believe they are, yes.
Is there a water main shown on the plan?
Yeah.
Six-inch water. Ten-inch force main?
There's eight-inch water main going down South Street, and then there's six-inch coming off Central Street.
Six-inch in blue.
Do we have an idea as to how old the water line is within the intersection?
I don't have any idea, no. You notice the side where the bank is on?
Yeah.
The small little console lines don't no longer exist, because those are conduits or piping that goes, you know, through the tunnel or over the tunnel. That was all done during the tunnel installation.
Do you foresee any problems that we've not identified here?
No, I don't, no, I think we covered it all. I mean, if you have any other questions that we could answer.
Just seems very intricate, series of piping, and that would be my concern, that you wouldn't inadvertently, you know, strike one of these other utilities and end up with a debacle in a, what for us is a pretty busy intersection in the square.
Understood.
So I just urge you to use prudence.
I would, off of the, the contractor was involved with all the Comcast work that was involved with the tunnel installation at the Times, he's been around quite a while, and is fairly familiar with the square.
Okay.
So, I have pretty much confidence in him.
And Harry, maybe you could also just, you know, during, during the construction, I see that, that you're going to be notifying Ms. Barclay, who's the head of the Hingham Downtown Association. I, you know, if you wouldn't mind just kind of checking in with her, you know, while this is going on, so that, you know, I think sometimes if, if somebody has a concern, they sometimes raise it to her, but, you know, and I'll send her an email after this meeting, but I think if you two are in touch while this project is taking place, that's just going to help.
Yeah, I mean, the square's starting to come alive with the good weather and, you know, pedestrian traffic and more car, you know, more cars, so I think, I think we've learned from prior projects that at least if the merchants have some warning, you know, they understand what's going on and can plan accordingly.
Well, eight-thirty start time was in coordination with
Yeah.
With, you know, the Hingham Square Association, because that whole block is generally closed at that time.
Yeah.
North Street's quite busy, and Main Street still has a lot of activity at that time, but
Yeah.
That little block there is pretty much...
That's a good idea.
Although we do anticipate that changing with the Lincoln Building coming on station, so.
Hopefully we'll be done with before that gets too busy in that area.
Good.
Well, good luck. This is, this is going to be a complex project. Glad I'm not the one with a shovel.
Would someone like to read the motion?
I move that we approve the request of Comcast to install and maintain, to install and maintain approximately 61 feet of two four-inch PVC conduits, including a three-by-three manhole at the intersection of Central Street and South Street. This conduit will originate from the existing Comcast conduit within the intersection where the three-by-three manhole will be installed and continue under the paved surface of Central Street and South Street to completion at number seven, Central Street. The Hingham Engineering Department has included the following recommendations. Work hours shall be between 8:30 PM and 5:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday. Engineering department shall be given 24-hour notification prior to work activities. Proper notification to abutting residents, businesses shall be the sole responsibility of the applicant. In addition to the abutting properties, the following recipient shall also be notified. Lynn Barclay, Executive Director of the Hingham Downtown Association, discoverhingham@gmail.com or her phone number. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated March 18, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Dig carefully.
All right. All right, so we're, our guests are...
Coming.
Coming. They're on their way. They should be here before 7:30 from the planning board. So they had other engagements, and they will be here as soon as possible, hopefully before 7:30.
Well, I guess we could vote to sign the warrant for the 2019 Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
That's exciting. Come on, it's one of my favorite...
Very anticlimactic.
What color is it this year? Yeah, exactly. I could give my little report.
That'd be wonderful.
Where, I don't want to jump in, but, you know, we're all, we're all here, right?
Ready to use.
I actually do have a couple things tonight.
Perfect.
So, one is, as many of you know, Donald Miley passed away. He was a Hingham firefighter and an EMT and an Air Force veteran. He also worked on the Apollo project, which I think is pretty interesting, since this is the 50th year of the Apollo 11 mission, and on behalf of the town, I attended his, his wake on Sunday, and I have to say, it was just a awesome, was awesome to walk up and see, I think there had to be 10 firefighters lining the walkway at the Downing Funeral Home with the fire trucks out in front to honor both Mr. Miley's service to this town and service to his nation, so it was, I think, a great display of our support, and we're thinking of his family in these, these hard times. This, tomorrow, the new Citizens Police Academy kicks off, which will be great, and tomorrow night at the high school is also Pizza Palooza for people who don't want to cook. It's a great gathering benefiting our SNAP program, so that's from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Hingham High School. And then this morning, Tom and I accompanied VSO Keith German to the Employer Support of the Garden Reserve breakfast held at the Braintree Armory. It was really a nice gathering, and I think made me, once again, so proud to be from Hingham, because we, as usual, are sort of setting the standard for support of our employees who are in the Garden Reserve. So, I would, with your indulgence, like to read the statement. So, "Statement of support for the Garden Reserve was provided to the Town of Hingham. We recognize the Garden Reserve are essential to the strength of our nation and the well-being of our communities. In the highest American tradition, the patriotic, patriotic men and women of the Garden Reserve serve voluntarily in an honorable and vital profession. They train to respond to their community and their country in a time of need. They deserve the support of every segment of our society. If these volunteer forces are to continue to serve our nation, increased public understanding is required of the essential role of the Garden Reserve in preserving our national security. Therefore, we join with other employers in pledging that we fully recognize, honor, and comply with the Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act. We will provide our managers and supervisors with the tools they need to effectively manage those employees who serve in the Garden Reserve. We appreciate the values, leadership, and unique skills service, service members bring to the workforce, and will encourage opportunities to employ guardsmen, reservists, transitioning service members, and veterans. We will continually recognize and support our country's service members and their families in peace, in crisis, and in war." And it's signed by Tom Mayo as Town Administrator for the Town of Hingham, and Craig R. McKinley, National Chair of the Employer Support of the Garden Reserve.
Nice. Harry?
Yeah, a couple of things. I think many people saw that the Globe Local this Sunday ran just a wonderful article about Dr. Gallo and her upcoming retirement, and for those who didn't have an opportunity, I know it is online, and I hope people have a chance to see it. On a related personnel note, the board was just, we were all so pleased to attend Barbara Farnsworth's retirement celebration last week. It's, it's a little bit bittersweet. Barbara will be, she's working through the end of the week, Tom?
Yep, she's here through Friday.
She's here through Friday, and, you know, it's, it, many people, including Paul, had such, and Tom, had such kind words. I think all of us who have had the privilege of working with Barbara are inspired by her commitment, and we're just so grateful for the many people in this community that she's, that she's touched and helped, and that's just, it's a lot of people. And I was, I was looking for the details on my phone, because I can't remember the numbers exactly, but, no surprise, but we actually, I know, well, you know?
Must be distracting.
End of the budget season, little, little. Today, Janet Morley from Capital Market Advisors sent Tom and I a list of, of the, of the MMD rates, which are the daily rates that, you know, for municipalities for borrowing, and what Ms. Morley pointed out is, since the beginning of the year, the interest rates have come down, and so just as an example, the 30-year, the 30-year note for a AAA bond community, I believe the interest rate today is 2.64 percent.
Wow.
And that's a drop of, of 34 basis points from January 1st, and so what Janet was pointing out, and we get these updates periodically, is that the interest, the interest rate market is very favorable right now. Just as a, you know, as a benchmark, we've been given guidance by capital markets to assume long-term borrowing rates of 3.5 percent, and capital markets suggested that for the contemplation of the water company, 3.75 percent. So, this is a period of significant interest rate favorability, and again, our AAA bond rating gives us access to the capital markets in a way that, that is very helpful as we contemplate many different capital projects on the horizon, and certainly, capital markets continues to keep us updated on those things, but it was, that was helpful to see today.
Could you maybe comment, if you could, on regular capital projects and water company capital projects? Because I've just seen some confusion in the press recently about our ability to borrow for the water company and our ability to borrow for other capital projects. Can we do that or not?
We probably shouldn't get too much into that on an non-agenda item.
Okay.
That's the problem. What Mary was speaking to was the email.
May I put that on the agenda for Tuesday?
As an update. Yeah, of course. Yeah, sorry.
No, no, I, that, I just seen some confusion, so I think we should, we should clarify it once again.
Heard, yep.
Sheldon, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes, actually, I have two quick announcements tonight.
Michelle!
Karen kind of stole one, but I'll get to that. The first is, I'm pleased to announce that there will be an event celebrating Hingham's designation as a green community on Tuesday, April 9, at 9:30 in the morning downstairs in the central meeting room with the Commissioner of the Department of Energy Resources. So that'll be a good opportunity to reflect on the town's work and move forward, and I just want to thank many of the town partners who helped us get there, such as the Energy Action Committee, Seth Pickering from the state, the light plant, the school department, DPW, MAPC, and Energy Source. So that'll be nice, looking forward to that.
That's great.
The second one is, I'm excited to start the Citizens Police Academy tomorrow night to get to know
Ah, fantastic.
More about the department's operations, to meet some more of the men and women who serve as officers, and also to get to know some of the other residents who will be taking part as well.
Good for you.
Thanks.
Excellent. Thomas?
Yes, so I have a couple of things. One is to piggyback on something Mary had mentioned with Barbara's departure. You know, true to form with Barbara Farnsworth, is she's not just, you know, counting her last couple of days and, you know, having coffee with people and leaving. She's down there working hard, training our new, this is Council on Aging Director, Jennifer Young, who started on Monday. So we have about a week's overlap for Jennifer to try to get the lay of the land from, from Barbara, which is a great, a great resource, but we're also, as sad as we are to see Barbara go, we're very excited for the future with Jennifer. She's very energetic and looking forward to starting, so.
Excellent.
So that's some good news there. I did want to inform the town of some terrible news that we received over the weekend. One of our building inspectors, Mr. Rick Wakem, passed away unexpectedly. He spent 15 years with the Town of Hingham after his retirement from the city of Boston as a, as a building inspector for them. So there's a lot of dedication to his craft and to this town for sure, and he will be missed by everyone who he touched, so. Thank you.
Do you want to mention about the public information meeting?
Sure. There will be a public information meeting for the water company acquisition discussion on April 6 at the middle school from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM.
Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you that I had the privilege and pleasure to meet Sunday going around the neighborhood, thank you for your warm and welcome reception to my message. It was a nice day, and I decided to get out there and do a little grassroots reach-out on the water company issue, so, you know, come to the town meeting. There's plenty of information out there to help you make your decision. We think, obviously, purchasing the water company is, is the right way to go. Generationally important decision for us that will be remembered in history for. We did selectmen reports a little out of order, only because we were running ahead of schedule, but now Ms. Savage has joined us, along with Mr. Carr. Well, ladies and gentlemen, please join us. Thank you.
Your favorite warrant articles.
Always good.
Good evening.
Always nice to be seen. Thank you.
Do you have a case of Hingham, please?
Yes.
We did.
Have these, have these been voted on, or we're still in progress?
Nope, they've all been voted on, both by Planning Board and Advisor.
Okay. What do you got?
So, from the top, zoning article, I don't have the, what the numbers are in the warrant, so I'll just go by what we have in front of us. So zoning article, oh, I now do. So, the first of the zoning articles will be Article 38, which is a modification to the enforcement provisions in the bylaw, that currently in the bylaw, there's a flat penalty of $100 for violations that the building commissioner can impose. This modification provides an escalator of $100 for the first offense or day, because each offense, each day is considered a separate offense. each offense, each day is considered a separate offense, to $200, and then to $300, and then $300 for each day thereafter. It just provides a little bit more of an enforcement tool for the building commissioner and brings us more in line with some of our neighboring towns on the same topic.
And it gives the zoning officer?
As the discretion, I'm sorry, yes.
That was my question, yep. Sorry.
Sorry, no, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Yes, that's right. He continues to have the same discretion on the number of days and whether or not there's a remedy underway and all of that sort of thing, so.
But allows him to further incentivize compliance?
Yes.
Was this prompted by a frustration on the building department's ability to enforce the code?
I think it's been a discussion with him over time. I think there's been a number of times where he wished he had a little bit more. It's, he's pretty discreet, it appears, when we get the numbers on how much fee revenue comes, it's pretty modest. I think that's both a combination of the fact that there are not a large number of circumstances where he needs to get to this point, but it just gives him a little bit more teeth as you go forward, and just makes us more consistent with the town surrounding Zoning Article 39 relates to the retail sale of alcohol, and just adds it as a use in the bylaw. This, this came from, as a result of some conversations after a project came before us, that in, you know, in some circumstances, that use is going to generate potentially some different pedestrian and vehicular behavior, and it's just an opportunity to allow the planning board to do site plan review for new license applications for alcoholic beverages, just so that we can make sure that the circulation is, is at least looked at and that the abutters have the opportunity to understand what the, what the scale and activity is going to be.
Good. This doesn't in any way intrude upon the licensing authority of the board, though, right?
It does not, no. It's, it's, it's our site plan review mechanism being applied for new licenses or expanded licenses of...
Allows you to factor in alcohol as a consideration.
Exactly. Just to, just so that we can look at the site itself and its ability. You recall, there was a discussion about this on a fairly tricky location.
So, so, for instance, there was a merchant in the square who acquired a liquor license recently, so that the acquisition of a new license for that location in the square would trigger this review?
The site plan review, it would, yes.
If it was a location that didn't previously have the use?
Yes.
Then it would, and if I may, the site plan review is triggered not only by the use, but by virtue of the special permit A3, which is how the planning board really looks at parking and sufficiency of parking and onsite circulation, and all special permits have to have a site plan review with them. So, we would do site plan review, but the trigger is really the A3 for parking. And that seems to be one of the things that neighbors key in on the most when a new use or new activity happens, it's changes in traffic patterns and pedestrian safety. So, this is why the planning board felt that this use in new instances required a little greater review.
Thank you for digging that up.
Because otherwise, it was just considered a retail use, like any other retail use, with no sort of special consideration.
That's right. Article 40 is just really a cleaning-up article of rezoning some conservation land, 21 parcels scattered about the town, and just rezoning those as official and open space. It has no change to use or, of the parcels, and the same conservation restrictions. They're, so they are, it's really just a map cleanup article, which you see a couple a year typically.
It increases the buffers, though.
What's that?
It increases the buffers.
It does, in some instances, but these are all parcels owned by conservation now, subject to conservation restrictions. This actually started with a look at the Lehner acquisition, which was zoned residential, and our GIS specialist felt that that should be green, you know, consistent with all the town-owned lands, which is official and open space. And then, upon starting that analysis, looking back a few years, the most recent five or six years' worth of acquisitions hadn't been rezoned, which is fine. It just changes the color that the parcels look on the map. So, really, out of a consistency and display desire, not to change the use, the protections, what's going to happen there at all, that was the advent of this.
Easy to understand.
And I'm sorry, when you say owned by the Hingham Conservation Commission?
Town-owned, so some are, you know, ConComs, some might be town.
Okay.
When I say town, I say, mean the global town, not REC versus Board of Selectmen or Conservation.
Right, okay.
Capital T.
Capital T.
Zoning Article 41 relates to the downtown Hingham Overlay District. We sort of addressed three primary items through this. One is, we add a provision that provides advisory review by the Historic Districts Commission for projects within the overlay district. And then, there's a provision, if the Districts Commission isn't able to, that the Planning Board and/or Board of Appeals may engage outside consultants for design review. But, it's, it's really just an opportunity for us to get, it's, it's not the same as the Historic Districts Commission official review, but it allows us to ask them to look at projects in the overlay district.
Advisory nature.
It's advisory in nature, that's right.
And where, where does this apply, Gordon?
In the downtown Hingham Overlay District, so I, we don't have the map with us.
So, it's outside the historic district?
There is some overlap, but that's right. But, this would be, this, this would apply to those that are in the overlay district but outside the historic district, that's right.
And so, how, how would that work? So, if they come in and the Historic Districts Commission suggests some changes, but the contractor or developer doesn't want to make those changes, how does that?
Well, that's, it then becomes a discussion between the Planning Board and the applicant.
Under advisory or if they're in a district?
Not if they're in a district.
If they're not in a district, it's advisory, then it's just, it's for us to condition or otherwise, as we're doing the site plan review.
And what criteria will the Hingham Historic District Commission use when conducting this design review?
It will be the same standards, the Department of the Interior standards that they apply for properties within a historic district. It's just an effort to treat, within the downtown overlay district, all of those properties are older and have been deemed to be important features in the streetscape. Some are in historic districts, and some are not. And so, this is an effort to have the same type of design review for all of the properties. We've had more applications in the overlay district, and some of the feedback that we've received, and some of our just kind of learning-as-we-go experiences, are that there's a need to be consistent in reviewing the important historic attributes.
And would, Mary, or Gordon, would you know, like, how many parcels might be affected by this?
All of the parcels within the downtown, this article is more than just the advisory design review. So, this article amends the downtown Hingham Overlay District, and I would say, I don't have the firm number, but I would say maybe 900 parcels of varying sizes.
900?
Within the overlay district.
Would be affected by this?
Would be affected by this overall, well, affected's kind of a strong word, but...
The requirement of the advisory design review?
It's about half and half, 50/50, or within a formal historic district, 50% or not.
So, so, so I'm clear, roughly, then, how many parcels would have this added requirement of an advisory design review by the Historic Districts Commission?
If I may clarify, this is not a brand-new requirement. The regulation used to say that the planning board could refer for design review. Now, the language says the planning board shall refer.
How many parcels would be affected by this?
I don't have the exact number, but I could...
And have they been, have they all been notified about this potential change? And have, did they participate in the hearings?
The planning board did duly notice public hearings. We did not do abutters notices to everybody within the overlay district.
I saw it in the paper.
I'm just, I can remember when I was on advisory that there was a designation that was going to affect about, you know, 800 homes around Hingham, that people were not given notice. And, and I seem to remember that we had a member on the advisory committee who was affected, who was hearing about it for the first time. I'm sensitive when I'm reading this language that, of the possibility that that, that could exist, because, you know, in a sense, and I, I hear you, that it was, that, that advisory design review was a possibility in the past, but this is now making it obligatory. And I'm just trying to think about the property owners who purchase parcels, understanding that if they wanted to make any modifications, the town process was X. And now, it seems as if the town process could be modified here. And I'm, I'm just trying to get my arms around how many parcels that could affect, and the amount of outreach that's been done so that we don't have a circumstance at town meeting where somebody's reading something for the first time, understanding that it affects them, and, you know, I, I think sometimes having those discussions on the floor of town meeting is difficult, or moreover, the changes put into place and folks are, we're sort of unaware of it.
Correct, and I totally understand that, and I'm sensitive to that, as is the planning board. I just want to be clear for everybody watching, the current language does say now that the planning board may request comments on the proposal from the Historical Commission or the Historic Districts Commission. The new language changes that "may" to a "shall," and we take out the Historic Commission, and we focus on the Historic Districts Commission, because the opinion was they're our design review experts.
Sure.
And the intent of actually making that change was exactly what you're talking about. The planning board had some feedback from customers that said, "We're not sure how to go through this process. This language isn't clear enough. Who do we talk to? The Historical Commission? The Historic Districts Commission? When do we go? Do we go before we come to the planning board or after?" And so, that was some of the many comments that we received back over the past year, year and a half. So, that was actually our intent in doing this.
Uh-huh, and I'm just curious, but in the advisory committee, did, you know, kind of how, how'd that discussion go? Was there...
The advisory committee voted unanimously in support. We did talk about, as you might recall, whether putting some kind of diagram or map in the warrant might be helpful to depict the area or not. It's such kind of a long, large area, ultimately, I think we determined not to put a map in the warrant, that you wouldn't be able to understand that. And we also talked about the fact that, to most people, discussing the difference between a zoning district, an overlay district, and a historic district, that can be very confusing. There's a lot of lingo and jargon in there. So, we did actually talk about this article, I think, the most out of all of them.
Between that and the roof decks, yeah.
And the roof decks was actually the biggest focus.
Absolutely.
Understandably, yeah.
I, I just have to say, I concur with Mary. I, you know, I sat on advisory, I think, when we were making an extension of a historic district, and, you know, you do have to obviously do abutters notices for that. I have...
That's binding review versus advisory.
Right, 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 right. But, it is, it is, as you suggest, is binding review, but it is an added layer of review. I have talked with folks who suddenly find that their asset has been identified on the historic inventory, and that they are subject to review by the Historical Commission for certain aspects of construction, including the demolition delay by law, without any process that preceded their, you know, their distinction of being recorded in that inventory. And so, I think folks, when, as Mary suggests, when they find this out for the first time, when they're trying to undertake a project, you know, we've heard, I've heard people's frustration with that. And I, I'm concerned that this creates that sort of dynamic for folks who, you know, aren't paying attention, haven't paid attention, and then, you know, see, are required in all circumstances to go before the Historic Districts Commission, rather than if a parcel comes to you or a project comes to you, and you can readily identify some historic significance to the change, to add that layer of process. So, I guess I'm, I'm just concerned about this one.
Fair, yeah, no, it's, the, the other challenge, though, is with May, then it's up to us as the planning board to make that, that judgment call on one versus another. The reason we have the Historic Districts Commission is because they are the experts on the historic value, right? You, you know, you could trust my judgment on that, but I'm not sure everybody would. So, rather than having us choose, you know, or make judgment calls to, between different applicants, we thought that the advisory review, which, and, and in our discussions with the Historic Districts Commission, because it's advisory review, they can do it on their regularly scheduled meetings. So, it won't, it's unlikely to delay a project in any, in any way, because they can do them every couple of weeks on a regular agenda, because we were very concerned exactly that, that we could be adding extra layers in time to the review process for, for projects. And so, we're really careful about that.
And I, I'm concerned about that as well, and in particular, I'm concerned just about added costs, right? I mean, it's, again, you know, assuming the advisory review could be done in a session, okay, but to the extent it then involves a site visit and, you know, the, the cost for having your architect or your lawyer with you, I mean, I think it, that the extra layer of the process is costly to people.
I've been through it.
And, you know, you and I disagree on this, so...
We do indeed. I don't see it as a negative.
Yeah, I guess for me, what's really important with town meeting is, is making sure that that town meeting understands what it's being asked and understand, and this is, this is true with every single warrant article, is, you know, what, what is the meeting being asked to decide? Does the meeting agree with the recommend, do they like the recommendation? Do they not like the recommendation? And I think it'll be really important that the meeting understands what they're being asked in this, because for a number of parcels, and it sounds like it could, a couple hundred parcels, would that...
I'll get the exact number for you.
That, that for some parcels, again, the, the meeting is being asked whether it will, it will, it will be willing to support that this, that this review now has to take place. And clearly, you've identified some advantages of that. I just want to make sure the meeting understands what it's being asked to decide, because, you know, I, my, my first foray into zoning was on a committee where we were looking at the Hatfield Amendment, and my colleague to my left was a much better speaker at town meeting than I was.
Your immediate left, yes.
And, yes, and anyway, I, I think what I learned from that is that, you know, especially with all this zoning, because it, it really does define what our town looks like, but also how we go through that process, we really, it's important that people understand what's, what's being asked and...
There's a certain irony with that statement, because after seeing what the Hatfield Amendment has become, I, I have a certain amount of regret for the position I took at the time.
You think I was right?
I think I was right for the reasons I stated, but I think that I didn't fully anticipate what it would turn itself into.
Yeah.
You know, what I see the planning board trying to do here is a good thing, because, you know, we had the tension with the Lincoln Building versus the earlier settles glass iteration, and I think it was being bounced against each other, and it was confusing. In this way, you know, if, if this particular overlay has to go through this checklist, some structures just may have no applicability at all, and it's obvious. Some may be a little more subtle.
I would think, I would think.
Well, yeah, some may be a little more subtle. You know, the old Rosado supermarket, which is now some kind of bank or something down in the square, at least the sign was saved, which was kind of cool. You know, it's an old part of Hingham. You know, it's an old part of Hingham. I would think that the Planning Board, had they had that kind of oversight review, would have gotten historic and identified that as something that it would consider important. You know, this, to me, is a reaction to what the board experienced going through the recent permitting activities. And historically, the Planning Board has always learned from its experience and tried to craft a bylaw that works better going forward, so that it eliminates some of the hiccups that come with permitting, as we're about to see with the roof deck discussion.
With the roof decks, right. They're similar in that way. We're trying to be as upfront with the applicants as possible, so they know what's expected of them, right? And with the roof decks, right, as the chairman said, right, there's been recent projects that have raised this issue, and so we spent a fair amount of time talking about how to determine the applicability of roof decks. And as some of my colleagues said, when you're on the seventh floor of a walk-up in the South End, a roof deck's a pretty nice way to get some air, right? I think if you're on the second or third floor in downtown Hingham, it's a little bit easier to get outside for some air. And in a way to kind of preserve the character of the downtown, we wanted to define these roof decks on a proactive basis. And I basically laid it out, and I won't get into the details of it, but if you're on the third floor, you can have a hatch deck, but it's designed to keep the sightlines of the roof deck as minimal as possible. So that was another piece of zoning Article 41.
I did like the fact that you, you know, you specified the processes for demonstrating it, the story polls, like, so if I'm going to undertake this, I know that this is going to take some diligence on my part to be able to demonstrate to you that I meet the requirements.
That's right.
And that's something that originated out of historic districts. I mean, I've seen the story poll used many times in that capacity.
Keep coming.
Well, I'm just...to me, the historic fabric of the town can be pulled apart one string at a time. So, you know, as vigilant as you are to the position you hold, I am to the one I speak of.
I completely agree, just...
I like the idea of not letting umbrellas become flying projectiles.
Yes, right. We kept that language in verbatim, yes.
I agree with that.
Is that from you?
We got lucky on the roof deck.
We did, yes.
We got lucky. It might not have worked out that well with someone else.
We couldn't find a more nuanced way to say flying projectiles.
What we're learning from, and absolutely, you know, I appreciate that, you know, both the Planning Board and the ZBA, you know, you're looking, and as you're implementing and you're permitting things based on our zoning bylaws, you're finding places where there's a lack of clarity, or there's a gap, or something has changed, and I appreciate the proactive nature of it. I also realize it's a tough job to do, because, you know, a lot of us, you know, we like a lot of regulation that kind of defines how things look, as long as it doesn't apply to, you know, "my house, my property" kind of thing. And there's a tension there that I think makes your job, your job, difficult. Again, it goes back to my point, which is, the meeting needs to understand the ramifications of what it's voting, because you can't have one without the other.
Absolutely. It's the balance that we try to strike, but you're absolutely right. It's tricky, right, because we want folks to be able to do what they want and what they prefer to do with their properties. We just need to make sure that we've got the rest of the town's interests in mind at the same time, so...
Listen, I voted against the designation of vernal pools, because I didn't feel townspeople had noticed about their vernal pools. So I'm maintaining the same...
Noted.
Same state of state.
Noted for now and the future. So, other questions on 41?
Think we did enough on that one?
So Article 42, which is some modifications to the site plan review requirements, really to help the town comply with...it's a federal permit that is required for the MS4, which is the municipal separate stormwater system.
Storm sewers.
Storm sewers. Right, I agree. I know there are four S's, you know, by town meeting, I will have them memorized, I promise. So the bulk of this is some technical changes to bring us into compliance with requirements of that, with that federal permit, and allow our folks to kind of monitor that and report accordingly. And then the other provision is, the key provision in here, is to provide the Planning Board, at its discretion, through its own procedures, an administrative option for review of very simple site plans or waiver requests for site plan. I don't know that that's something that we'll take up in any near future, but it's just to give us the option in the future.
Well, you're necking down some dimensions.
Which?
Items 14 and 15. So smaller projects are subject to greater scrutiny? In a nutshell, or am I...
Recommended motion. No, recommended motion. So the provisions for reducing the thresholds that trigger site plan review call?
Yes.
Those were actually removed at this point.
Oh, okay.
The recommended motion, yeah.
The Planning Board, well, they felt that there was still merit to that analysis due to some comments received during the public hearing process. The Planning Board chose for this year to rescind those, do additional studies.
Right.
And we may be back again talking about it next year, but we thought we wanted to do a thorough analysis. Normally, there's not just one tool to resolve something, right? There's several different mechanisms within a community, and so we wanted to be sure we really analyzed all the approaches. Is that fair?
Yeah, I think when it came down to it, because it was part of the discussion for a while, we realized the complexity that we were bringing on and trying to solve the problem on a tight deadline while we were trying to get these approved. We thought it was more important to take a breath and spend some time next year figuring out the best way to get to what we want to get to, because we do see some times where the smaller projects might have those impacts, and I do think it's something that we'll take up, but it wasn't something the board was comfortable to do collectively this year.
It just wasn't ready. That portion wasn't ready. And another...
You're teeing it up. You're teeing it up to further refine it in future years.
We still think, at least...
That's my hope, yes. We'll have a new group, you know, and new chair probably next year, but yeah, I think that...
Where are you going, Gordon?
I know the feeling, I think.
And if I may, there may be more than one mechanism. The solution to some of the challenges may not just be zoning bylaws.
I was going to say conservation, maybe.
There might be a general bylaw revision, that section that talks about drainage discharging over sidewalks, or maybe that needs to be reviewed again. So it may be a series of different tools, instead of just the zoning bylaw. We can't just zone every single thing.
Yep.
There's other more appropriate methods. So we will be talking about it again.
Coming to the last zoning article.
Okay, moving along. I'm going to take Articles 43 and 44 together, if that's all right. These are ZBA articles, just to bring some timeframes in the bylaws into consistency. They're pretty straightforward, and I would say cleanup mechanisms.
Interesting design.
And then, what's that?
So a permit is issued, it subsequently becomes nonconforming, and...
So this...
No.
Okay.
No, go ahead.
So this allows up to a 12-month period, so if a permit is issued and then the regulations change, it just provides an extended period of time for that person who has a permit issued to them to activate that permit.
Under the old...
Under the old, it was six, now it's going to be 12.
12, okay.
And this is just consistent with state law.
Okay.
So it's not...this is what it is. It's not a discretionary thing.
So we were more strict, and now we're coming into alignment with state statute?
Right. In 2016, the law changed, so now we're just catching right up.
It's just a cleanup.
It's a cleanup.
And then the last items on our sheet, which we've discussed before, but I will take the opportunity to discuss again, are Articles 35 and 36. 35 being the article to establish or to seek the funding for the comprehensive master plan, and 36 for the establishment of the Master Plan Committee. It would be, say, on more than one occasion, how important we think this effort is for the town, and that we've identified a consultant with that set fee that we're seeking at town meeting, and hope for approval, and we'll get started as soon as we're able.
How did your advisory hearings go on those articles?
Equally positive.
Great, great. So advisory committee's supporting?
Yes.
Great.
I made the pitch for the master plan draft.
Thank you, yes, that's right.
Passing the torch to you.
Indeed, right. Well, I've...again, no pressure, right? And so that's our World for Town Meeting 2019.
All right. You know, last year, I remember that the Planning Board had to do a ton of work on marijuana, and knowing that if your recommendation held true, we wouldn't need all of the work that you had done, but in an abundance of caution, because we tend to be pretty good planners of things in Hingham, we said, "Let's plan for the possibility if it were to happen." And I appreciated the great work, the flexibility, and just the attitude that the Planning Board went into it, because I know that, as you did a lot of those regulations, there were some other things, probably some of this work, Articles 35 and 36, that you couldn't spend some time on at that point. So it's really nice to see that there's a really strong body of work coming to town meeting that is reflecting things we can do to make improvements in our community. And I hope that everybody in the Planning Board appreciates or recognizes that we appreciate all the thoughtful work that goes into it, and all the...and also then all the work that you do to apply all these zoning bylaws to projects around town. So thank you for all that you do for us.
Well, and thank you, and I will say one more time how appreciative we were of Jen Gay Smith to be chair last year, navigating all of that. It was between that and the ADU's, it was...
Especially dwelling in the sewer.
Yeah, that was huge.
Yeah, that was a Hall of Fame year for...and so I'm grateful to have followed her.
No pressure.
But, no, that's fine. And thank you very much for the comments. We enjoy what we do and who we do it for.
I was especially pleased to see the settled glass project, as it's become known, go through the way that it did. I think that just shows how it can be done, so...
Again, a shared effort among a number of boards and a lot of folks, so we were pleased as well.
And we very much appreciate the vigilance of the board on 29 Canterbury Street.
Noted.
Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn since we've already...
One thing I forgot to mention during my report earlier, Mr. Chairman, is that the report...the warrant is done. This is what it will look like. You can't miss it. Bright green. It'll be coming in your mail in the next couple of weeks. Please remember to bring it to town meeting. There will be...there will be extra copies. Yeah, Mary, if you could just stick around for just one second. There'll be extra copies at town meeting, but please remember to bring yours to town meeting.
Will that be posted on the website?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yep. That's all, sorry.
No respect.
These days, Alice.
Motion adjourned.
So moved.
All is good.
Good night, everyone.